It's four o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting of the North River Rock Planning Commission to order, please. Motion made. Please call the roll first.
They're still excused, that's right. Commissioner Banks, Commissioner Blasco?
Here.
Commissioner Chambers?
Present.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Pierce?
Here.
Commissioner Wallace?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
And Chairman Clifton?
Here.
Please excuse those not present.
Motion made and secondly, we excuse those members commissioners not present today. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have nothing under administrative today, but we do have Mr. Alex Benton with the North Rock City Attorney's Office with us today, representing in the absence of Ms. Marie. No administrative. You have been submitted a copy of the minutes of our previous meetings. Are there any additions or corrections? Motion made and second, they be approved as submitted. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move right into our planning commission. First item on our agenda today is conditional use number 2025-03 to allow a daycare center in a C3 zoning district at 2501 North Popular. Is the applicant here? Please come and give us your name, please.
Tamika Fowler.
I'm sorry, again?
Tamika Fowler.
Okay, Ms. Fowler. Have you had a chance to review some general information and conditions?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree with all of those conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, has there been any opposition? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Are there any comments from any of the commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Foster?
Ma'am, I noticed she is asking for a conditional use for a daycare, but it looks like in the background it was approved in 2000 for a special use. Is that because we're doing this because of change in ownership?
We didn't have conditional uses in 2000 with the new owner, but it's now conditional uses where it travels with the property, so we don't have to come back again, but the same conditions will apply.
Yeah, right, okay.
Whatever new owner there is in the future.
Okay.
The other comments? On the application, on the application, please call the roll.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White? And Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application was approved. See Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what you may do next.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next case, rezoned case number 2025-10, a rezoning from I-2 to R-3 to allow construction of a single-family home at 902 East 13th Street. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Yes, give us your name, please.
Albert Hale.
Okay. Have you been able to review the information from the staff?
Yes.
Are you agreeable with everything?
Yes.
Has there been any notifications or any comments from anyone in the?
No, sir. If you'll remember, a few meetings ago, we rezoned several properties to the east of here to allow for development of single-family. Mr. Hale failed to get on that boat, and so now he's asking to rezone his as well, so he can build a new home.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? Mr. Chambers?
Yes, because we can't repair it, and it's approximately 90 years old. Yes.
Okay, any other comments on the application? Please call the roll.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White? And Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application was approved. See Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what you might do next.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Next case is special use case 2025-05, to allow a special use to allow large vehicle parking, semi trucks and trailers in a C4 zone at 3223 East Broadway. Is the applicant here? 3223 East Broadway?
I have not been able to get in contact with them. This one, if you'll remember, we postponed from last meeting due to notice and have not received the notice, nor have she made contact back with me.
And I'm noticing those trucks?
Are there.
Are still there.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chambers?
Donna's opinion? There's two trucking, two different trucking firms that want to park on that property. The one that is there now is the Trucks Company that is next door to Ms. Whitfield's accounting firm. She is the applicant and is requesting so that her grandson can park his one truck there. And then once we, as we said last time, once we resolve this issue, if we do, then we will talk with the Trucks folks about how to get them into compliance.
This, I'm familiar with this property and these trucks have been, that is a truck brokerage company there, operating out of there. They've been there for years and years, and I don't know what tripped it up to, for code to bring it forward that they are not in compliance with the truck parking there, but obviously they're not, but it has been an ongoing use for years. The reason they're not here today, I do not know, but I think that we should give them the opportunity to postpone this today, and Mr. White?
Don't have any proof that they've done notice yet, so that's our whole thing, is we're not able to vote on it because we don't know if there's notice been done yet. Correct.
We've got two different, we got two different people here. We have Whitfield that made the application, and then we have Trucks that's been there for years and years and years. Whitfield has not been parking there.
So the applicant and owner of the property is one that's wanting to park their vehicles on this property?
Probably, as I just said, they've been there a long time before code was enforced in enforcement, but why they're not here today, you know?
Yeah, we haven't been able to get hold of them from the last meeting, a month ago, so we have no idea if notice has been done, so we would not be able to vote. So it'll be postponed for a third and last time next month, so next month, if it's not, then it's off the agenda.
So we can't vote it up or down today either way?
We don't know if notice has been done, so we have no idea if the public's been notified.
Chambers? Motion made and second, we postpone. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you. Okay. White?
Yes. Well, if this gets voted on, it gets solved. Yes, we do that. Probably don't know, just for their example, their example there. It's been there forever, so code's, you know, probably said it's, you know, there, and I agree with Steve.
You know, they should do something.
Yeah.
So item number four will be moved to the bottom of the agenda today. We will go straight to item number five, special use case 2025-07, a special use case to allow a tattoo studio in a CPH zoning at 3508 JFK, O'Hara Rock. Refresh me what a CPH is.
Commercial Park Hill.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Hello.
Please give us your name for the record.
My name's Cynthia Darling.
Sorry?
Cynthia Darling.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, have you been able to look at the conditions to consider from the planning commission?
Yes, sir.
Are you in agreement with those?
Yes.
Has there been any comments from the neighborhood?
There has not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from the commissioners? Mr. White?
I'm sorry. I mean, it is a part of the park, yeah, it's right across from, yeah. They didn't comment. They didn't comment, no. No.
Any other comments on the application as presented? Please call the roll.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White? And Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application was approved. See Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what you might do next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six is rezoned case 2025-09, a rezoning from R4 to C6 to allow a new office building and assisted living facility at 2321 John Ashley Drive. Is the applicant here? Give us your name, please.
Yes, Jamie Collins with Neil Schaefer, and I am representing the owner of the property.
Okay. Have you had a chance to look at the general information from the staff?
Yes.
Are you in agreement with those?
Yes, we're in agreement. I think the only thing that we had additional was, we did a preliminary landscape plan for it, and speaking with staff and visiting the site, the very west side of the site in that first phase, it's heavily vegetated from about that creek over to the west, and if we put a fence along that deal, I would remove that vegetation, and we just request that we keep that vegetation there. There is an existing fence, but that's for the state Veterans Association, and it's metal, so if we cleared it all, it'd be see-through, then we'd end up having to put a wood fence up there, so I think it'd be better served, and we spoke with staff about that, and just to leave that natural and kind of leave a natural buffer there.
Okay. Anyone in the audience would like to speak on this application?
Chairman Clifton? I just want to point out, this is a rezoning, so there's no conditions or agreements that get voted on.
Okay.
So this is a straight rezoning, so whatever the fence and that kind of stuff, that's not what you're voting on. You're voting on a straight rezoning, yes or no on that.
Okay.
So we can't add conditions or stipulations onto a rezoning.
Any comments from the commissioners on the application as presented? Please call the roll.
White?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Phillips? Foster?
Yes.
Chambers?
Blasco?
Yes.
And Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application was approved. See Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what you might do next. Thank you. Item number seven is subdivision. Mr. Chambers? We've already considered item five. No, sir, I'd rather go all the way through.
Right. Mr. Collins's comments about the fence and the buffering, that's a part of this item.
Okay.
Twenty-five twenty-three, it'd be in the landscape comments about the buffering.
Yes. Okay, so you agree with the, uh, recommendations from the Site Plan Review Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any other comments from Commissioners? Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir. It's, um...
I don't think he added it in the comments.
I, yeah, I don't think he did either. But, um, it, it basically says that you have to provide that screening and there are various ways to provide screening. Oh, yeah, no, no.
Okay, um, no other comments, all in favor of the application as presented, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Your name?
Stephanie Tutte with Kimley Horn.
Ma'am, uh, have you had a chance to review the, um, recommendations from the Subdivision Committee?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree with those?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the Commissioners? On the application as submitted, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay.
Mark Rutter with Holloway, Intervene.
Okay, uh, do you agree with the, uh, recommendations from the, uh, Site Plan Review Committee?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the Commissioners? On the application as presented, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you had a chance to review the recommendations from the Site Plan Review?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree with those?
We do.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Yes, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Linda Sue Sanders, we own a property, uh, directly in front of what would be the, I guess, the alleyway and don't have a lot to say except for that, as my daddy used to say, "Child, you're trying to cram ten pounds of meat into a five-pound casing, it's eventually going to explode."
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak on this application? Yes, sir.
My name's Philip Sean Patterson, uh, own a piece of property in that area, uh, I believe, was it eighteen? How many units you? Eighteen and you currently have sixteen parking spots? I believe that's what shows on the map. Where are they going to park? On the street? You want them parked in front of your house? Don't want them parked in front of mine.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Patterson. Uh, has... I know this is, uh... The zoning there, uh, I know, is it C six there? That allows...
Also C P H.
That allows this many units on that small of a piece of property?
Yes, sir.
Uh, does he meet the parking requirements?
It's one space per unit.
Twenty-one parking spaces, the way I counted.
Pardon?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Yeah.
Spaces, if I count them on the site.
Okay.
Am I correct?
That's right, yes, sir.
Thank you.
So he does meet all the requirements. Is he asking for any waivers?
No, sir.
Okay, we have heard, uh, from two of the neighbors in the neighborhood. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this application? Mr. Chambers?
Yeah, don't hold any Super Bowl parties.
Uh, anyone else? On the application as presented, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Your application was approved here, you may see Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what to do next.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Item eleven is S D twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six. Fourteen forty Industrial Park, lots twelve R dash one and twelve R dash two, preliminary plat at A two hundred Industry Drive. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through nine and subsections and the Design Review Committee recommends approval.
That's yours again?
It's mine again, that's right.
Uh, okay. Have you reviewed the comments from the Site Plan Review Committee?
We have.
Are you, uh, agreeable to those?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the Commissioners? On the application as presented, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve is S D twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, East Park Commercial Edition, Lot one R Block one, Site Plan Review for a drive-through coffee shop at forty-two eleven East McCain Boulevard. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through ten and subsections and the Design Review Committee recommends approval.
This has come before the Site Plan Review Committee. Have you received a copy of the recommendations or thoughts from there?
Yes, sir.
Are you in compli-, do you, uh, agree with those?
Yes, sir, and we got the trees approved through the landlord as well, so we're good to go on that.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Are there any comments from any of the Commissioners? Mr. White?
Y'all have a well-run organization, I'm just going to comment you, I don't drink coffee, but I drive by your places and they're always clean, they're, they don't hold up traffic anywhere, but whoever runs it, if it's you, you're doing a great job.
Yeah, well, that...
That would be my comment, but I don't like coffee.
It's all the team, we got energy drinks, shakes.
Oh, I'm going to try that.
Let me ask you, this, is this the lot out in front of Best Buy?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Yep. Any other comments? On the application as presented, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, you may see Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what to do next.
Calvin Allison.
Al Madison?
Yep.
Okay.
Next item on our agenda is item number four that we've removed to the bottom and I would request that I be excused from the panel and Mr. White take over. Uh, back on item four.
All right, this is item number four, it's a special use to allow auto sales in a C three zoning district. Location of the request is four-three-one-four East Broadway, North Little Rock, Arkansas. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Would you state your name?
Jayden Brown.
Mr. Brown, I appreciate it and tell me what you're, uh, thinking about done.
Um, I essentially want to be able to use my lot to sell cars displayed-wise. Um, I use it currently as an office building to do basically just online sales and I'd like to be able to display vehicles there. I did get a list of what, um, standards that I need to uphold, maximum twelve cars, et cetera, et cetera. I agree to follow all...
You agree with everything that's recommended? Okay, we have any comments from the audience? Would you please come to the microphone and state your name and your, and your address, please?
Brady and Winnie Johnson, forty-four oh nine Haywood Street in North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Okay.
Did you get it? Okay.
It's Ms. Johnson.
I'm a disabled veteran and, uh, he suffered with PTSD and there's a lot of music and stuff maybe going on, I don't know, but I know the last person that was there, you know, that's what they did and it's directly behind our backyard and we want to enjoy our backyard, we are seniors and that's what we want to do. And we've been in our home over thirty-eight years and we want to continue to be there without all the loud music, so we oppose to it.
Okay, all right, and thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. and Ms. Johnson did provide the information that you received.
The latter, thank you very much, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson. Do you have any other, uh, comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like to address the, um, comments that was made. Uh, they're alluding to a car lot that was there. I don't know when the car lot was there, had to be more than fifteen years ago because the applicant that was in it was a car detail shop. And I just wish that I had thought that anyone might oppose what's going in there now as to oppose what was there for the last fifteen years. And, and I could have brought you multiple pictures of the filth and the garbage that was there in that building. The backyard was like a jungle and it was filled with all the trash and the garbage from this business that got dumped out in the back. When I bought this property, it took me six dumpsters and bulldozers to come in there and clean that mess up and clean it up and cut it all out and cut all the weeds out, cut all the trash out, got it to where the rats wasn't running around it. And I just can't imagine someone coming today and saying that they don't want what's there now as opposed to what was there. This man has got us, he, he's agreed to the regulations for car lot, twelve cars, but mostly he does online. And I just wish that someone would have drove by there a year ago and looked and seen what was there and had I have known, I could have brought the records from code enforcement and shown as to what we've turned the property into. So I strongly disagree with this letter that this lady has presented because it is misinformation. It hasn't been a car lot in at least fifteen years. So I urge you to please allow this man to go in business there and operate another business in Rose City. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, uh, a question for Mr. Brown, uh...
Pardon, it's a, uh, question for me?
Yes, okay.
Come to the microphone.
Yeah, um, after hearing your, your neighbors behind you...
Yes.
Uh, with their concerns, uh, how will you address that? And, and being a, a good neighbor and assuring them?
Of course, so I want to start with, uh, thank you for your service too, I'm a disabled veteran as well, um, so I want to say thank you. I personally have been occupying the lot for the past two months. Like I said, I use it as an office space, but even then, as badly as I want to be able to display and sell cars there, I've abided by all the rules, I don't even display cars, nothing, I solely use it as an office space. I've made sure month to month, I still pay all of my rent without being able to even display cars there to sell them. I'm still making sure that I'm meeting all my payments. I have no speaker system, no sound, there's no sound that goes on and I would be curious to see if within the past couple of months there's been any issues because I solely just go up there to do paperwork and be on the laptop. All I want to be able to do is just be able to sell cars up there. Um, I have a family to provide for like everybody else and I, I'm not here to bother or disrupt anybody. I don't see why there would be any noise, any trash, they can abide by it too. I have a lawn care guy that comes every single week to two weeks to come mow my yard and make sure that there's no trash, anything. I mean, I, I maintain a very nice space, I would love for them to be able to come and see my office and maybe enjoy a, you know, a cup of water or something with me, I mean, there's, there's, there's no problems, I don't have any issues. Uh, I, I don't try to step on any toes or bother anybody.
So no fit and they didn't leave with the, with the mechanics, you know, sometimes folks working on their car and want to listen to their music?
You won't even hear a power tool there, I mean, it's, it's solely just to be able to display cars.
Thank you.
Mr. Chambers?
I, yes, sir, Mr. Brown, item five under the conditions to consider is a six-foot, uh, opaque privacy fence between you and a residential use. Does that fence exist?
Yes, there is fencing across that entire backyard.
Okay, is it, is it six feet and in good condition or...
It is in good condition, I will measure just to make sure, but it should be a six-foot fence.
You put it up when they remodeled?
Yes.
Okay. All righty, and you do not plan to have any kind of music or outdoor noise or anything?
I do not, no, sir.
Computer's awfully quiet, so, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Clifton? I noticed, uh, there's an aerial photograph that was submitted with your application here and it looks like maybe a Google Earth photograph and I noticed in the back of the building, all the way across the lot, it's got a mu, a ton of overgrowth back there, I mean, is, is that what you have cleaned up since?
Yes.
Where is your...
Right here.
Oh, that's the fence line.
Yeah, right, but I'm talking about between the fence line and the building, that looks like a very dense...
He's referring to the Google Earth photo that shows overgrowth all the way up to the fence line.
That was the alert, this is what, what you have in your packet is red now.
Yeah.
What you have in your packet is what's there now.
Okay, this is all I've gotten of package, right?
Obviously, it's not the most conventional, but I also have, I just installed security cameras all the way around that is live footage and I can show anybody live footage of what it looks like now, if needed.
Okay.
Oh.
Is, is this...
Like I said, not the most conventional, but I can show if anybody needs it.
Okay.
Their fence line here.
So we've cleaned this whole area?
Cleaned all of this up.
Okay, and that's a building that here sits on the side?
That is correct.
So you take...
This is the back of that building, right there.
So you took this whole, removed this whole dense area back here and now it's a grass lawn?
Yes.
Okay, I always wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
So your phone on?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, is that it? Okay. Ms. Robinson, would you come back up to the microphone? Mr. Brown seems like he's very sincere, have you noticed any noise the last two months?
No, but the limbs are still falling across and there's still a lot of grass that is coming over my, in my backyard and I have to keep it clipped, I've been doing it for a while now.
Maybe, maybe Mr. Brown can have his yard people clean that up, do you think that would be possible, Mr. Brown?
Maybe so.
Absolutely, I just, I can't, I can't fix something I don't know.
Oh, I know, I know, and so...
No, I'm talking about the previous owners, like this guy back here.
And, and that's the previous, and Ms. Robinson? We, we, we have code enforcement, so if he breaks any of these rules that we're putting, it's just a matter of code enforcement and they can take his license away in five minutes if they want to. So we would like this to work out because he seems like a fine young man, y'all seem like a fine young couple. Uh, but you think there's something we could work out here?
I truly hope so because see, like I said, I've been here X amount of years, the fence fell on the other side and that containing to this, they won't even fix it over there, deep pool and all this kind of stuff, water over here, it then failed, you know, it's like the code is not working, but I'm gonna go with what y'all say, I trust your opinion, your decision.
Okay, thank you so much, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Robinson, do you have a copy of these rules? Ms. Robinson, do you have a copy of these, these conditions? I'll make sure you get one.
All right, so with that, do we have any other comments from any of the other Commissioners? All right, so with that, uh, is this a call to roll one or all I...
Just a clarification here, this is Ms. Johnson.
The email came through, it came through Linda Robinson. I just asked her. Ms. Robinson, I apologize. Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson, I apologize for that, because I heard you say that, it's her fault.
We were trying to figure that out ourselves.
It's her fault. So anyway, with that, I'd like to call all in favor of approving?
Got to call all.
Oh, you got to call, I'm sorry, I apologize. Again.
We need a motion?
We have a motion?
We move to approve, move to approve, yeah.
Second?
Okay. Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
With assurances from the applicant of a quiet business, yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Okay, so we're all clear, okay. And, and he's aware he still has to go in front of city council, or does he on this one? Okay, and if you might tell Ms. Johnson or Ms. Robinson? To, to let her know that she still has a voice. Thank you very much. You're welcome. With, with the motion to adjourn, or any other special comment?
Second.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.